Okay, but that's not what we discussed when we originally discussed the sign. We had a plan on the sign, we're moving forward with the sign.
Okay.
We've got the funds to make it happen and do it right. Why don't we do that?
Because when the engineer did the, when I looked at it, the engineer did the analysis, we knew those steel posts were structural needs. A wood post would run away, they're very complex. I took a look at a bunch of signs out there and there's a whole, there's a whole lot of work and cost in trying to make wood survive out here.
So we could still plant two steel pipes and put a facade around it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that will happen someday. And because that was the suggestion to build the, to build the river rock around it. And, yeah, and we got some quotes for building river rock around. But, yeah, with the steel posts, you can put river rock around it so it'll look like the original thing that we started with. And put the concrete base down so it'll support that. In the meantime, you gotta put it up on those steel posts just for the structural.
Okay.
And then, and then the cosmetic end of it, we've got a guy here, Gobart, who does that, who's been to City Hall. And so, I mean, it's not like it's difficult, it's, as you're questioning, yes, we spend money and it gets done. You're shaking your head, yes.
A great idea, isn't it?
Great idea.
Great idea.
I'm glad I thought of it.
So, I think we need to look at this.
Okay, we will, we'll update this for the next time. If anyone needs any of those. All right. Thank you.
So this is income we, we already, this income that comes to us and we've already got it, and you're just proposing how we spend it?
Yes, it's a restricted fund.
Is it restricted?
Yes.
Yes.
So in other words, you couldn't add it to the general?
No.
Right.
So you have to use it for projects and so on?
Yeah, it's, it has a purpose, a highly defined.
All right. So I, I know you have the new phone system coming up next.
Yep.
That was one of the things we had to spend.
Yeah. And we've been talking about a reform system for two years now.
Right.
So let's pull the phone system up. And this is, uh, it's under seventy five hundred dollars, so we can, we can go straight to it. This is from Frontier. Uh, we have got a phone system in there, in our, our connection, our, what do you call a box on the wall there? Chris?
Huh?
The junction, the box on the wall that connects the telephones to the phone system. My brain froze out.
Back lane?
Well, it's got a back lane in it. Uh, there's a main.
Or the coppers coming in?
Yeah, you know, I've got copper coming in.
Taco box?
Taco box, thank you. I knew there was a jargon for it. The, uh...
In any way, it's an old, uh, north town.
I'm claiming that anybody who can, who can repair it probably died five years ago. And they correct, they said they still got one guy there at, at Frontier who they think can, can repair it. So anyway, so we went ahead and looked at just a straightforward, simple system, once you scroll down.
I, I just caught something there.
May thirty-fourth?
Yeah. I think that's three to four, right? It's not three, May thirty-fourth?
I think that was, I don't know.
No, it was May twenty-fourth that they, they made this proposal.
Oh, that's definitely, okay.
They, they meant two, not three.
They went and checked, see if he was watching. Anyway, so here's the list of all the things. And they went through it and sized it up. Uh, they had it preliminary wide, and we made sure there's enough phones, and basically a simple phone system. And then had the, had the battery backup. They said that's fairly important for these things, and we don't have one.
Although I think Staples has that cheaper, so we'd probably go there, Staples.
Okay. Yes.
Simpson.
All right. And, uh, so scroll on, but it probably also includes a labor component for integration, but we can talk about it. Okay, parts and labor, uh, when your parts and labor warranty included, okay. And then, uh, if we want a maintenance contractor, it's four hundred and eighty bucks a year. So these phone systems have lasted how many years without maintenance?
I don't know.
Something ever.
Longer than I can be.
Okay, and on that, it says here, um, we added one telephone and battery backup to the quote.
Yep.
So how many phones is this gonna serve, a total of five?
Uh, seven.
Seven.
Seven phones.
Kitchen for a three council, uh, mayor's office, Denise, Laura, John, and then the other office. And the phones, without the extra two phones, what are the phones cost? They said we got, just trying to figure it out here. Hundred and nineteen dollars? Uh, let me look. It, it was a few hundred dollars to add the phones. I think it was twenty-four hundred, twenty-three hundred before we started. Cause up at the top is the five phones, is that correct, Laura, the two?
Yeah.
That's the module.
Well, the, the five are the phones. It's a eight-button digital, non-backlit.
Right, it's right here.
And they're ninety-eight, ninety-eight seventy-five a piece.
Okay, so we've got five phones there.
No, it's just five.
Is it just five? I thought two phones came with the special package. Okay, so it's seven. So if we want to take a phone off, it's a hundred bucks. Is that right?
Yeah.
So these are gonna, they're gonna come in and install the system and all that?
Yes, and they teach us how to use it. It was completely.
Can I have this cord back here anymore?
Yeah. Was, is this cord, yeah, cause if we have a phone here...
We can just turn off the sound.
I mean, if we wanna have someone...
That's an installation question, that's just me, but okay.
I mean, I, I installed this phone. Okay, scroll down. And then there's a lot of, and then, go ahead and scroll down. And there is, see, that's the, oh, let's see what they call it. Night town, okay, they don't, they don't, they come up to three thousand. Here we go. Communications platform, there we go. And that's what hangs on the wall.
Right, that's the distribution right there.
Yeah, that's the distribution.
And it's expandable, and it's nice.
And, uh, yeah, there's just more. And this one has the capability, we can buy a little thirty-nine dollar voice recorder and leave messages and makes it easy to change the message, this week bills are going out or so and so, or this month you need to make sure you get your dog latched in, so if you're on, if you're on hold, you get useful messages.
If there's a water leak.
Through the water leak.
So, does this system, is it gonna have the capability to do the auto-call?
Do what now?
The auto-call to the residents of the city of Oak Park?
That's done by D E L with their reverse nine-one-one.
Well, and cities do that also. You know, if they have a major flood, like the city of Stanwood had it, we got calls from the city of Stanwood.
This is a phone system that compares.
Bear bones, it's got three pages of options, of inclusions. That's not a bear bone system.
Well, a central bell. And it selects, if you call in and there's three lines, it goes to the open line. I mean, they, they, yeah, I know. It's got a zip in, wherever that is. So, as far as storing every answer, every telephone number at Gobart and calling back, that's really the reverse nine-one-one does. And that's what happens when they hit the water outage, you got the reverse nine-one-one call. So that's a part of D E L. And they have got this whole big operation over there with computers and monitors, a nice building where they can do all that sort of stuff. So this is, uh, let's go ahead and look at it.
So, so continuing on, like, page eight, it says, "Voice call not included," is that correct?
That's correct.
So you have to pay extra for voice?
No, we get voicemail as part of our regular phone service.
Oh, okay, gotcha, 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 gotcha.
Yeah, there's things in there that we could have added in for more complexity. But we basically just got it up, and there's what they look like. Laura's gotta have training. The thing, you know, you lift the thing up on the left.
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome.
So, so you've, you've given us all the bells and whistles, but you haven't told us why we need it. I mean, so I know we have an antiquated system. But, I mean, you could still live with that for three more years.
We don't have a phone that rings.
Yeah.
Except Denise's, and it rings very, very light. We can't hear it in other offices, so if she's not sitting at her desk, we don't know the phone's ringing.
I'm sure you could get that repaired. You could either get another set, or you could, you could get the telephone company.
It's the, it's the eighty-seven-year-old technician who comes out here, he knows T T L logic. Now, he's, it's that old system, and they said they could send their guy out, he can see him fix it. But it's, this is such an old system that no one's guaranteeing anything except what the hourly rate is. And, uh, and the phones are falling apart, I bought a connection cord.
I understand the money's in there, but I still contend that if the budget is, well, of course, this is, can't be used in a general fund, but I know there's must be other things we could spend money on too.
Well, we're not tapping that, this account that hard. So this is not, we've thought of everything we can be, we can do, we're not even getting our thirty-five percent we're allowed to spend on this, on operations this year. So, and that's what Chris said, we go ahead and finish the sign in its original, you know, approach. Yeah, we can do that because we're not tapping this that hard.
So, and just the history of this, I mean, we have gone over this phone system time and time and time again. Jay Brewer spent, I don't know how many days or hours or months trying to find a new system for the city. I agree with you. I also agree that we need to replace the system. It's terrible. But...
And at some point in time, the box on the wall is gonna die, and we may or may not be able to repair it.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Unless you wanna continue, Ken.
No.
Listen.
The phone over in the shop, what about it?
Yeah, so this is just for this building.
Right?
Which is another personal phone. It's transportable to the...
Okay, so what about that one?
Something's on a standalone line.
It is?
Yeah.
So separate lines, separate everything, okay. So no way to transfer calls out to that?
Well, with this system, we can transfer to a particular phone number with this, with our current system.
Okay, good.
So you totally call forward?
I did notice on the options list.
Yeah.
Did you have music for the hole?
We, we're not taking that option.
Okay, I was just gonna make sure we didn't take that without knowing what it would cost.
Twenty-four seventy, and I don't know if that's monthly or if that's a, that's what it said in the book.
We're not doing that.
Okay, we're gonna buy a thirty-nine dollar one of these and plug it in.
Oh, yeah. Remember the fee for playing?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll go, we'll go, we'll have you write original music, and Denise will sing it.
I don't care, I can do it. I don't wanna, and copy right, that somebody that's been dead for two hundred years.
Okay. All right, so that, I think that's about, the rest of the stuff talks about fancier phones that we didn't order, or didn't get quoted.
Other stuff.
There's the Star Trek phone. Okay, so we'll, we'll hit this again next week, cause this is part of the resolution, and we will keep, we'll keep scrubbing things a little bit, we'll work on getting a quote to pretty find a sign, and, talk from there. All right, take care of the phone system. What's next? Oh, county ILAs. Let's start with the easy ones. Just start. We have got three interlocal agreements, rather straightforward stuff. This is prosecution service, and that's what we've had. Oh, that's cool, city of Granite Falls, and we need to change that. And, uh...
See, they, we're right here, it's the couple of everything.
Okay. And this is the same thing we've had every year? And it's the same, scroll, is there a price on this? Yeah, twenty, there's twenty, okay. I have so much cost per case, so that's when, so when Sergeant Casey captures them in the county, we don't have to pay that? And that's what we, you know, hope everybody stays legal so it didn't cost us any. So, if you had a chance to look at it, I'd appreciate a motion to have his, have the mayor sign the interlocal agreement.
I've read it. Has everybody else read it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement for the misdemeanor prosecution.
I'll second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Go to the next one. Regional drug, yeah, this is the five hundred dollar a year thing. And, oh, Sergeant Casey did not, I did not have him give this little spiel about oxycodone and heroin. What's happened, uh, oxycodone, as you all know, was a bad, was it, was it heroin or something? But it was, was highly abused, and over the past several years, it was mechanically reformulated so that it's a, it would have a timed release, so you get the benefit, but you don't get the high. And if you try to convert it into some other form, it gets destroyed. And, uh, and so what's happened, the oxycodone, uh, uh, problem has really gone away, but heroin is now replacing it. And so we're seeing, uh, activity on that, still the same, same type, and I know one of, some of the arrests around here has been, has been through that. And so there's activity going on. Now, we talked about this last year, it's some, oh, no, this, this is not what I'm talking about, they, also they say we have to do it by twenty of, twenty-eleven. Uh, we're a little late on that, again, another typo. He exists from the period of July twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen. And let me scroll down to how much this is gonna cost us. And it goes by population, since we're a small player.
Did it go up any from last year?
I, I, you know, I'd have to go to Laura for that, cause I didn't check that number out. It looked like it was about, about five hundred dollars, if I remember, are we out of there After the signature page. There we go. There's, there's, okay, let's, here's, here's what this thing consists of. I mean, you got detectives, you got organization, you got, uh, different police departments combining in, and Stahomish County combining, so it's a, it's a county-wide thing. And there we go.
One more down.
One more down, okay, we're almost there. There we go. Now, you get down to Gobart, and we're five hundred and fourteen bucks a year.
That's about fourteen dollars more.
About fourteen dollars more? Okay, so it's, uh, and you see the, uh, the big cities like Everett and Edmonds play the big bills, and Stahomish County. So, uh, we use them, but to the benefit of the city, and it costs a lot. So I'd appreciate a motion to approve this one for signing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve this first, I'll submit it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
I, you have drug cash force in the law enforcement contract for eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
On the budget?
Yeah, on the budget.
For how much?
Eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is that what we budgeted?
Yeah, you haven't spent any yet.
Well, because we...
That's probably why.
Yeah, because we misbudgeted, we...
Want me to read it again?
No, I'll find it, it's...
It's eight hundred.
It's, yeah, five what? Drug cash force, five twenty-one, twenty fifty-one. Yeah, we had eight twenty-five in the budget, I don't know how we get over that number. But it's less money.
Right, but this is what that's budgeted for, right?
Yeah, that's what the budget is for.
Is for this particular agreement.
Yeah. Can you see what, what the past years? Yeah, it was eight twenty-five last year, that's what it was. And it was a thousand thirty-five the year before, and five hundred and four before that, so we got a deal. That's why it's eight twenty-five, cause that's what we spent last year. So, it's, it's like three hundred bucks less, so it went down. We got a deal. So we need to sign it till they change their mind. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now let's go to the last one. This is, uh, interlocal for transport of prisoners. And I know we discussed this before, and we were supposed to have signed this last year, and somehow we didn't do it, so they sent it to us again. Uh, and this is, it used to be, they contracted with Watcom to haul prisoners back and forth, and the county took it over this year, and it went from like ninety-eight bucks a trip to fifty bucks a trip. I'm not sure that we have any body transferred back and forth, but if we did, it, it's a better deal. And so, and this is put in as an ILA. Now, Emery took a look at it and said it failed a couple of things as an ILA, because it didn't have the administration in there, it didn't have the distribution of resources upon closure, which are requirements. So it went and looked, in our standard share of contract, it has all that. So this is actually an addendum to the ILA, so when I sign it, I will put, make that notation on there. But again, this is straightforward, it's, uh, you know, it could have been put in as a fee adjustment or a memorandum of understanding, as far as I'm concerned, but they put it as an ILA, so I appreciate a motion to have we sign this.
Um, I'll send it.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, this is for transport of prisoners. Have we ever utilized this? I, I'd, I'd have to ask...
For main cases, I think we've maybe one or two in the last five or six years, so not really a lot of big deal.
Right, so what will we pay if we didn't sign it? If we had to transport prisoners? How would it affect us?
How else would we transport prisoners? I mean, cause they gotta get them from jail, hypothetically speaking, you're going to Evergreen District Court, they gotta get from Stahomish County to...
King County.
Or King County.
Yeah, it's King County and Watcom County, I believe, is what they were using. Or Kent, you said, okay.
So this is from the county jail to the court? This is...
No, this is from a out-of-county jail to a county jail, right? To transport city inmates who are being held on city municipal charges from the King County Jail or the Kent Regional Justice Center to the city municipal jail.
So in other words, like, if we issue warrants and they pick them up somewhere else? And they won't hold them if they pick them up somewhere else on our warrant? Is that what you're telling me? They, we have to transport them?
Well...
So why can't we just pay transport fees on a case-by-case basis?
Which is what we do here.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not, well, you know, that's all the agreement is for.
That's all agreement is for, okay, all right.
Yeah, we need to do it.
We don't pay anything unless we do it.
Correct.
All right.
So, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I get to do a signing statement, just like George Bush? Okay, what's next on the list? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna check, I'm gonna check. This is not much different from what we did before.
What is that? The Monroe Corrections?
Oh, that's the last thing on the agenda.
Okay.
And, uh, there's not much change from the last time we talked about this. We did have the appellate hearing on the fourth lawsuit this morning. We're awaiting the written opinion.
Second, can you back up today a bit?
There it is, third one down.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Found for the city with prejudice, and now that's what you're waiting for, the written opinion?
Mm-hmm.
And so there's one more level of appeal?
Yes, well, it depends what the, yeah.
Kent.
Yeah, can be one more level. Well, actually, I suppose you could take it to federal court afterwards, I don't know.
The state Supreme Court behind it, or...
Well, they took, you know, they took the, the referendum thing, they took the U.S. Supreme Court. Referendum fifty-one, referendum fifty-one, whatever it was.
Yeah, I know, you hand it in.
Yeah. And the rest of them are pretty much the same. And recent things, let's see, the, the last few things, uh, a recall of Martin, found be, insufficient, it's, it's, it's over with. A recall of Wright found it be insufficient, it's on appeal. Derek Block filed a complaint with the Public Disclosure Commission about me, and they evaluated, and they, they said the debaters were not required of this income. Uh, there's another recall on me, found insufficient, and it's on, on appeal. Singular Wireless is suing every city in the state of Washington for something or another. The large cities are taking the point on this and handling it. If we, we could join in, but the illegal fees would far exceed twenty-two hundred dollars, so we're gonna let them do all the work. And, uh, and see what happens. This is, this is due with taxes that the state collected and sent to the cities some number of years ago on wireless stuff. So it's this, you know, state transfer of money, and we got it and had, may have to give it back.
So we shot the twenty-two hundred dollars?
That's the twenty-two hundred dollars was the estimate that was. And there was a recent recall on me, and then it was withdrawn. So that's about where we, where we sit. And, okay, let's go back up to the O P M, see where we are at. Yeah, the Open Public Meetings lawsuit, uh, had a hearing on it, and the city is, we filing for summary judgment on illegal issues.
What does that mean?
That means that, uh, the city attorney is saying it doesn't meet the legal requirement for the lawsuit, on the face of it. Well, when it hits the court, you know, I, I tend to argue with the attorneys a lot about how to do these things, but once it hits the court, I really, you know, I'll discuss it with them and such, but I go with their judgment, cause that's what they do for a living. And it was not, you know, sometimes they'll take their advice, but once it hits the court, it's, that's a, that's a, it's own world. And the reason he's doing that, he thinks that would be the least expensive way to resolve And he and the other attorney been going back and forth, uh, with discussions and... That's, that's about it, okay. All right, Wallace River Estates, let me just pull over that now. Alright, Wallace River Estates, uh, let me just pull up that now. Okay, pull up the email. Okay, well, suffice it to say, I got an email from, uh, the, uh, bondholder, and said, "What are you doing? This thing is old, you need to do something to get it off the pot, because it's costing us money." And then he attached to it, uh, a, a document that, that is relevant to here, so would you, why don't you just tell me what to talk about here? Well, it turns out, and I missed this earlier. The bond was based on a, a series of thing, of construction things that were done, and it's a percentage of the construction cost. So, uh, there were drainage and street utilities, and the forty-nine thousand's twenty-five percent of that hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so why don't you scroll down? I want John to take over in a second. Going down, and to give us the bond for the specified items. Now, the specified items, uh, let's go down a little bit more, yeah. Um, toward the bottom, I think it summarizes it. There's whole, okay, storm drains, uh, and street utilities, you can see that off-site and on-site. We have the dollars, we don't have the, uh, clear description. John, you wanna bring us up on this?
Okay, basically, it's for that old, old, two-year stormwater bond, maintenance bond. We got all the, the dollars, didn't have anything that those dollars were tied to. So I talked with Neil Latta.
Latta, yeah.
And Neil Latta is-
He's the engineer?
Basically the engineer for the project, and I talked to him Friday. And he was in Portland, and he was hoping to get back in time for tonight's meeting, so I could have something, tie in those numbers in to line items, so we can see if those yard systems are, or not, will include it in- that price. He says that basically, that bond was for all the improvements in the storm drainage to the right away. That those lot drains for the developers, it wasn't included in that bond, so.
But, first of all, there's fencing, that's the fencing they put around so the dirt doesn't get into the, the river, just go back up there. Off-site storm and water, we don't know what that means. We can see how much it costs, but we don't really know exactly where that fencing, clearing and grading, uh, off-site May Creek Road, uh, and then paving, of course, goes into streets. So we'll get that distributed, so we can see what that bond actually covers.
So who's the engineer, Latta, is he coming in here?
No, it's web enge- web engineering, let's just scroll over top through the letter. They are the people who did the, uh-
They didn't do that?
They did the, they, they were the developer's engineer for storm, for, uh, flat development, stormwater and such like that.
So after the fact, they can say whatever they want to?
I... No, he's not gonna, he's gonna give us some sort of documentation, and he's gonna have some sort, he's gonna have some backup document that he, that's not provided here, and we didn't find in our file, that specifies, let's just scroll down a little bit till we see one of them. Let's go down to off-site May Creek Road. There's, what, fifteen items there, and there's, there's some activity for each of those items.
Right.
And so we're gonna try to, we're gonna get that, so we can see what, uh, what those cover, and then that's what the bond covers, and then we can bring this thing to a resolution.
So, so the issue really is whether we support the bond, it's... But, but there was another issue about storm drainage and that development, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one, in particular, as, as, as I understand it, those are all, uh, the roof drainage from houses was to go into the whole system.
That was how it was laid out?
That's how I'm-
Yeah, and that's, that's how it was-
That's where you're trying to find out if they actually got the pipe in there.
Uh, they don't have the pipe in there. I mean, I, I can assure you that they, I'm fairly highly confident that part is not in there, because this is what the developer did, the developer did not do that end, and he put the vaults in.
Right.
And left access there, but as far as I know, we, there's no pipes in there.
So, who is that, did the city approve the bond and the developers? That detail in there?
This is what the city approved, as, as the bond, accepted as the bond. And so now we have to figure out what the bond is for.
Right, and so...
I'm waiting for them itemizing this.
So I guess my point that I was driving to is if there is some contention on the part of, of the city or former representatives of the city over what this bond represented, they approved it, and it, it really, so then it falls back into their camp, they approved something that they didn't know they were approving. Is that what we're seeing, or?
I mean, I, I, uh... Um, let's see what they are first.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and there's, there's a whole box full of stuff, uh, on, on Wallace River Estates that has to do with this, and, uh, I've gone through it a long time ago at one time, and checked things out, and... But I don't, I don't remember seeing this, of course, that was two-year, two, three years you weren't working. Anyway, so this one's coming in.
This is a, this is a list of commissions. It's not a list of obligations.
That's correct.
So, I don't, I don't, I don't understand some things because of this. Because it says it's free from defects, and if you don't have the pipe, why call it out as defects?
Well, the stuff they put in-
If you don't drain, where's the who, if you don't have the pipe, right?
Well, that's what the discussion was gonna have, but the bond is for, specifically for a certain number of items, and-
Yeah, and that they shall be free from defect.
Yeah, so we'll see what items were provided, were bonded. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. We'll hear it again next week. I just, can you get your plan in, or not, just so we can hold it over?
We're here.
Okay.
So this is the same bond that we actually discussed in debt?
Yes. Okay, what's next on here? Six-year transportation improvement program. Okay, bring that one up. This is something John does every year, John, I'll let you talk about it.
Basically... I don't know if you have a copy of the projects.
Well, no, just scroll down to the map.
Yeah, the map is-
Okay, anyway, every, every year, uh... We have to update our, what we call a six-year STIP, it's Transportation Improvement Plan. And it's a program that you list street activities for repairs, maintenance, even if you wanna grill the street, you can put on this. And you itemize it in, uh, priorities. Basically, this is for the two thousand thirteen, and all of the project on, on this list are included in our previous list, with the exception of the sidewalk on US Two. Basically... I put this before you, so you could see what's streets are on this list. Then we have to have a public hearing, and after a public hearing, then it goes to councils, who passes resolution. Then it goes to the Department of Transportation, and then we are eligible for funding. And if you don't have a project on this list, it's hard to get funding for. Uh, I've already talked with some people on, uh, some of this stuff that's included in this list, and getting information to put in for a grant from USDA next year, so we can get maybe three of these projects, and some of the lower-priced ones. But it has to be included for this transportation improvement plan, to get grants on this.
What about Dorn, Dun and Rowan, Dorn and Rowan?
We don't, we don't- And if you're talking about Gun Road-
Gun Road, I'm sorry.
Gun, Gun Road is gonna cost you multi-million dollars. I have tried and tried and tried for years to get improvements to that road, and basically, the streets are graded by wash stock, and that street is beyond help. So it's not included in this.
We'll talk about it at the moment.
I've been talking to the mayor, with some ideas, what we could possibly do with that. But, you know, some of them are included in this, and if you want, uh, I can make a copy of this.
Well, let's just talk about it, the, the red line there, uh, that's the, uh, roadway, sidewalk, bicycle lanes, stormwater, new water mains, and that's all of Orchard, and that's fifth from US Two to Lewis, and tenth from US Two to Lewis. So that is, you know, the, the front core of the city, and, uh, so that's full, so it'd look like Lewis Street. And, uh, and I'm not sure if that's one-sided sidewalk or two. Two-sided sidewalks, okay. Then there's an asphalt resurface of, yes?
Two-sided sidewalks on what?
Orchard.
On all the red?
All the red, it's two-sided sidewalks, storm drains.
Well, we don't have two-sided sidewalks on Lewis.
There we go, one-sided.
And once you put storm drains in, you have to do storm drain maintenance.
Okay.
And...
Why wouldn't we put sidewalks on Lewis?
You can add that to your list. You, you have two-sided sidewalks on Lewis Street, when we approved that portion of Lewis Street between First-
Right, and Fifth.
And Fifth.
But from Fifth East, we have only one side is, has a side-
You had half the street approved, basically.
John, what is with number four?
Pardon?
What is with number four?
First Street?
Yeah, First Street.
That's resurfacing, uh, just resurf- new asphalt on top.
But there's a lot of other streets that really needed rest.
Well, that's, uh, Arterio, and then that street that's on it is, uh, was it Timber Lane?
First Avenue West, that's right.
No, 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 that's different.
Number seven is Timber Lane.
Yeah, number seven is Timber Lane, uh, that's also an asphalt resurfacing. Now, we can put as many projects on as we want to, uh, it's a question of what are we gonna get?
And this can be revised every year.
It is revised every year.
Right.
Now, the other one, the blue, is a new roadway and storm drain, which is First Avenue West. And then the yellow are just grading and paving. Uh, that's part of Linda, Tweet, and, uh, Powell, okay.
Those are gravel roads.
Those are gravel roads that just go asphalt top. Two, now the thing the council's gonna think about is- Maintenance, doing this, is this, you know, important to the city? And this is a chance to, to think it through and drive around, and, and like Dorothy said, hey, some more needs to be done. Uh, and, and decide, because these things are, what, half a million bucks, pop or so?
How long do they vary from? No... Eight thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars to Orchard, if you did Orchard, that's a million plus, you know?
And then, you know, I mean, I've, I walk the streets all the time, do a lot of walking, and I'm, I'm not sure what double-sided sidewalks and archery would gain, outside of looking for city funding. And, you know, man, sort of the... So there's- Therefore, takes a chance.
One project that's probably a pet project for me, and I, I don't know that, I, I wrestle with that myself, or when I'm, when I propose this, but, um, you only have one access to the north side of May Creek, and that's First Street, and it would be, it would be really advantageous if you had a, at minimum, a pedestrian access to the north side of May Creek, down by the post office, so people could walk and pick up their mail.
Uh, I think it's all private property there, because there's no through street, or no street that goes deep there. And I'm taking a look, yeah, that's, I, I walked that area before, uh, including stopping out in the, uh, in the gully, and our comprehensive plan had some nature trails through there, and, uh, they, they get sort of pricey by the time you make it, so that you don't violate environmental laws and don't sink up to your knees in mud. So, uh, uh, but I didn't, there was no easy access, uh, east or west, or north and south. But I, yes, uh, that's something that would be, uh, walking bicycle paths would be wonderful, but I don't think we have any access there. Okay, so this is something that John's gonna work on, and then we'll get another, you know, again, next week with your, with your comments and such, okay? And the last thing that's not on the list is the, uh, Department of Corrections and Contract. This is the same we, we've had, uh, before. And so what we got this year, I think even the rates are the same, but I'm not sure, the, the buck ten an hour is the same, I'm not sure of the, uh, insurance premiums. The other thing that got pointed out is, uh, what does the insurance cover? And who does the equivalent of L and I and such like that, so we're gonna make a phone call in on this. And this is July the first, so we have to have it approved by next council meeting. And, uh, by that time, we'll have an official, uh, attorney review of it in the contract. And, uh, this next year, upcoming year, like this last year, we have to provide the tools, and that's what we bought, uh, tools for over the past, uh, time to, so they can do this work. And the work they do is just, just very, very good, and stuff that would not be done. So, I'd actually go ahead and entertain a motion to, uh, uh, sign the contract based on, uh, attorney approval and resolution, but any entry problems? Are we going lately?
I'll make a motion to just sign the contract based upon attorney approval and resolution, attorney entry.
I'll say.
Any other commentary? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, who's next?
Voucher.
Vouchers, okay. Hi Ken, this is your buddy.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve payroll voucher five one zero seven to five one two four for a total of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents, and two thousand and twelve vouchers, numbers one seven two five five through one seven two nine two, for thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents, for grant total of sixty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll say.
Okay, and as far as discussion, I had, um, three issues that I wanted to, uh, just make the council aware of. So there were three items, voucher one seven two seven six was a repair to, um, the, the one ton, and it was vehi- vehicular repairs, and they took it in for one thing and found some additional repairs, and therefore there was some additional consequences with that. And so I just wanted you to be aware that, um, why that is a five hundred dollar, seventy-five dollar bill. Um, that's, they, they did some replacement to the front end of the vehicle. They, they did cut some trees this week, PACE engineering, which was a five thousand, three hundred and sixty fi- uh, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cent bill. And, um, I asked the question why we didn't use local hires for that, and, and the response was that we were in, uh, power lines, and we needed somebody with a little more technical expertise. Okay. That PACE bill was not for cutting the trees, that was for the, uh, why don't you, why don't you pull up, I have to ask, because that was part of the reservoir stuff that goes into the loan. The trees were like sixteen hundred bucks to cut. And you haven't got that bill yet, because they just cut everything. Yeah. But that, again, was reservoirs. That, again, was reservoir related items. Problem, I'm not gonna guess. Okay, so it was Z Engineers, this was probably the part, we had some problems bringing the SCADA system up. They shut down, whenever the SCADA system turned on, the internet, the server would shut down, or the internet would shut down. And so that went back and forth on that to get that done. And uh... So that was, that was what this was for.
Can I ask a question then?
Yes.
So that's a new system, right?
Yes.
So if one part of the system is crashing, the other part of the system? Why wouldn't that be under a warranty contract? Or a software contract warranty type here?
Yeah, I uh...
We shouldn't have taken it.
I think it all had to do with the system we had in here and what we built. And this old system, getting back to the twenty years ago. It was thought at that time, the thing would work, and it didn't work, because the system's so old. And the tunnels for the new system that I have in my office overrode the tunnels for the computers here, and it just would make all our computers full of crap. It's worth taking another look at, because we had to get our IT guy in to come in to fix it. And they argued back and forth, and so finally we told him, put argument to fix it, we did. And that was the cause. And... Good question, I don't have an answer for that. So uh... You don't have an answer for that either, do you? It was coming up with software problems like that, I've seen that happen all the time, and...
Well, it's something we gotta look into.
Okay. Anyway, that's what that was for.
Right, right. So, okay, so I got mixed up there a little bit, but I guess I wanted to point out though that because I asked a question why we weren't using local hires for the history. And that was the reason, they want somebody with more technical expertise with power lines. And the third item was an item, which is voucher one-seven-two-seven-eight for Monroe Mowers and Mower. And the write-up there stated that the warranty was null and void, and my question back to John was, how old was the equipment? And he told me it was like only a day old. So it should have been under warranty. But they stated in that particular write-up, there was no warranty damage caused by misuse. And I guess if it's only a day old, I have a hard time to accept that there was any misuse.
Yeah.
But um, maybe, John, if you have some more comments to add regarding?
No, I totally, I totally, I totally agree, you know, and I thought you may on that. Also, and it's from where we bought some equipment in Monroe, Husqvarna. And it's two pieces, you put it together, just like you do the weed eaters, they have a male land, a female land, they, you know, they disconnect. And then... The thing wasn't working. I took it down there, and they said that it was misused, put together wrong, and all kinds of stuff. I don't know how that could happen. And they said it wasn't covered in a warranty, and I've heard through the grapevine that that's not the first time that that's happened to customers. And I'm not bad enough with anybody, but what are you doing?
Can you go back to Husqvarna?
Pardon?
Can you go back to Husqvarna?
That's where he took it.
No, he took it to a local.
He took it to Monroe.
He took it to where we bought it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You should.
So they're an authorized representative, you know, deal with Husqvarna, so they should...
So if the council wants to deny it, I'll just refer to check, and that's fine too?
Yeah, I probably will.
Up for one day old.
So we're gonna take a hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents off. We are.
Doing math or what?
Yeah, I'm doing the math. Yeah, I don't have the numbers, man.
We're gonna need to extend the meeting by ten minutes, can you handle that?
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for ten minutes.
We already have a motion number four, we cannot extend.
Well, there's gonna be some discussion of this motion, well, on the vouchers from where there's... Should you withdraw his motion?
I'm gonna amend my motion. I'm gonna amend my motion to exclude voucher um...
One-seven-two-seven-eight?
Yes, one-seven-two-seven-eight.